Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, good evening, President Oshka. And Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Viall.
Here.
And is Director Hines excused this evening? And Director Vice President Cobb.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can, I think they can hear me in China now. Okay, I'll try not to talk too loudly at this point. Next on the agenda is item number five, it is recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one is the recognition of the Gold Star Community Partner Award to Tacoma Unitarian Universalist Congregation. And I believe that will be presented by the Partnership Office in just a moment.
Good evening, hello, my name's Mary Lee Timber, I'm with the Community Partnership Office, I'm the coordinator. I'd like to give a little background about the Gold Star War. Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth who've, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, TPS recognizes that students cannot do it alone. In recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources to TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids. Here to present the Gold Star Award is Michelle Prevost, she's the family liaison at Mann Elementary.
Thank you. This partnership began in the fall of 2016, when the principal Taj Jensen uniquely went door to door and made one-on-one contact with various members of the community. As a result, Tacoma Unitarian Universalist Congregation adopted Mann Elementary and decided to take on responsibilities of implementing services that would meet the needs of our students and best support our students' learning. Partnering with Tacoma Unitarian Universalist Congregation, providing a comprehensive school program where students feel safe, supported, engaged, and their needs being met as school thrives. Therefore, collaborating with Tacoma UU and adopting our district's Whole Child Initiative with a common goal of supporting students that we recognize Tacoma UU Congregation as a Gold Star Community Partner.
And I would like to present this award to Reverend Linda Hart and Joan Benderson.
Yes, would you like to come up and shake our hands?
Oh, I would love to.
Just came from a little direction.
Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula, you did so much.
Thanks so much for your work, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item five point two, which is the recognition of Gray Middle School for wide-ranging achievements in advancing the use and access to technology by students.
Thank you, President Oshka, members of the board. I'd like to call forward the Gray Middle School Community Principal Sean Martin and the staff and all the friends and family that might be here tonight. So if you've ever watched the Academy Awards, you know that the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences, they have something called the Lifetime Achievement Award, and it typically goes to some elderly contributor who's had achievement after achievement over decades. And I feel like we're kind of honoring Gray Middle School for a lifetime achievement award with all the things they've done, but they've only done it in just a couple of years. So get this. All the Gray teachers, 100% of them, have demonstrated their commitment to learning new, critical technological tools and skills by participating in the multifaceted Microsoft Innovative Educator Program and earning their full MIE certification. Because of the school's commitment to advancing technology learning, Microsoft selected Gray as a Microsoft Showcase School, just one of eight in Washington. Student teams from Gray took the first and second and third places in the most recent STEM-related competition hosted by an organization called Mesa, Mathematics Engineering Sciences Achievement. That competition drew hundreds of teams throughout the region. Due to the school's successful technology focus, 49 Latina students from Gray recently were invited to spend a day at Microsoft Headquarters, learning coding and hearing from Latina Microsoft employees about future job and career opportunities. And teacher Phil Schmidt was named Washington's 2017 Mona Bailey Outstanding Teacher by Mesa, that network of organizations in Washington and 10 other states that aims to improve both racial and gender diversity in STEM fields. So when it comes to technology, Gray Middle School staff has committed to a key district value that every student, regardless of their neighborhood, their background, or their family income, should have equal access to the technology and tools to prepare them for the careers of tomorrow. And for that, let's congratulate Gray Middle School.
We're excited to be here, thank you for the recognition. And you know, I can't say enough about our staff and our kids and our community and their commitment to the goal that we set. We, as Dan mentioned, we did this in a very short period of time. We were in the Microsoft Schools Program for about a year. We'd done some tech-focused work, but for about a year. And it is a rigorous process to become a showcase school. And our staff, you know, they united around that goal, and their enthusiasm was tremendous. And we were all working together as a whole community to accomplish that goal. And I think the outcomes so far really speak for themselves. So we're excited about what's next and appreciate you having us out tonight to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Still, I'm looking forward to it.
Have a good thing going, huh?
Thank you. This brings us to item five point three, which is the recognition of staff teams at Stanley and Downing Elementary Schools for earning top-ten status among regional elementary schools as graded by the Puget Sound Business Journal.
Thank you, President Oshka and members of the board. I know how much you love these independent rankings of schools, especially when they deem our schools high in value and service to our students. It always means so much more to have a third-party independent authority see it and say it, rather than just us saying it. And boy, do we have a good one here tonight. The Puget Sound Business Journal looked at the data behind elementary schools from Pierce, King, Snohomish, and Kitsap Counties in search of the top 100 schools. And guess what? We have two schools to honor here tonight. Our very own Downing Elementary ranked number three on the list and and number one, Stanley Elementary. Yeah, come on forward and line up here. I'd also like to let you know that we had some other elementary schools make the list as well, a bit farther down, but still in the top 100 of the region. Grant Center for the Expressive Arts at number 80, Brown's Point at number 72, Skyline at number 38, Point Defiance at number 29, and Lowell at number 21. So the methodology gave the most weight to math and English scores on state standardized tests, but also factored in economic and racial diversity, classroom size, and teacher experience. So recognitions like this happen because of the dedicated teams at the schools and the leadership that those schools have and the work they put in to analyze the data and look after the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students. So the staffs of Stanley and Downing deserve special recognition. Congratulations and thank you.
Well, my name is Julia Heacock, I'm the new principal at Stanley. And so this award, I wish Cindy was here because she was the principal there for 12 years. And she is, she's definitely the woman behind this award, but I am honored to be working with the staff at Stanley. They are a special, special group of people. The Business Journal actually came out this morning and spent a couple hours with us, and they interviewed students and staff. And they don't get to come out to elementary schools very often, and they were blown away by just the dedication of our teachers and by just how cool the kids are. Our teachers work really, really hard, it's amazing. They spend hours and hours and hours on their own time to make Stanley the special place that it is. And I'm honored to be there, the staff are so cool. I invite anybody to come out to Stanley because it is, it's a gem that you don't know about, and it's really, it's different, and it's really cool. So thank you guys, very cool.
So I have to say ditto to Julie, Julia, but I have to say that Downing's the best. So now you have to come back. I have three of my fifth-grade teachers here, and when they talk about ELA scores, we scored at 96%, of our kids were passing in ELA. So that was in my fifth grade. I have Eileen McCaffrey-Lent, I have Karen Barnes, and I have Stacy McDougal. And they work their tail off every day, as well as the rest of the staff. I've been at many, many schools in Tacoma, and it's been really a joy for me to move to Downing, which I went to elementary school at, which is kind of fun. And you too, I know. And I feel like I've come back home again, which is very cool. And then to watch my staff work as hard as they do, day in and day out, the rigor they do for children, Common Core State Standards, all the data that they're working with, you name it, they do it. And I can leave at 6:30 at night and I still see cars in the parking lot, which I don't want them to do, but I know that they still do it, and they work together as teams and collaboratively. So I know they deserve this, and I'm just glad I'm standing here with Stanley. I did talk to Cindy Johnson yesterday. She is in Atlanta with her grandchild, and she said to say congratulations to both schools, so that's kind of cool. So thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, thank you.
Good to see you. Yeah, I know.
Wow. Thank you. That ends our recognitions and moves us on to item number six, which is a public hearing. This is a public hearing declaring Blueberry Park property as surplus and authorizing sale. Before I read the details here, I'm going to ask council to discuss a little bit about what this part of our process means, because we have a pretty involved process with any transaction of property.
Yeah, thank you, President Oshka. Tonight, we're asking for public comments around the sale of, authorizing the sale of Blueberry Park. I wanted to just note for the record that we have received a number of written comments as well, and those comments are all being provided to the board via the Friday Report. So if there are comments about Blueberry Park, we can take those now. I just want to clarify again as far as process goes, that the decision tonight is just to authorize the sale. The property will then be put up for sale, and then at another point in time, the board will review any offers for sale and make a decision about whether or not to accept those offers.
And just for clarification, at that time, there would be further public comment received based on who that person was and that sort of thing, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Do I still need to read this paragraph?
I don't think so.
Okay. That being said, if you would like to speak about Blueberry Park, I think that we have some cards there. Typically, we do three minutes, but we have a high volume of speakers this evening, also in the regular public comment. So we want to hear your comments, try and keep them to two minutes, and know that we're listening. Thank you.
First up is Joe Brady from Metro Parks, followed by Sandra Ford.
Thank you, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be in front of you. My name is Joe Brady, Chief Strategy Officer for Metro Parks Tacoma. Just have three brief comments. I want to really say thank you to the staff here at the school district for continuing to work with Metro Parks Tacoma around this relatively sticky issue of the property south of our ownership at Blueberry Park. That being said, we do, the Metro Parks Tacoma does support the sale and subsequent development of this particular parcel south of our ownership. It's been a historically difficult parcel for the Tacoma School District and for Metro Parks to manage. And we feel that its highest and best use will help not only our park and our patrons, but also the surrounding neighborhood. I think also, I'd like to comment on the parcels that are west of our ownership, or what are kind of referred to as the chairback parcels that are owned by the school district. We look forward to ongoing conversations with the school district in terms of the future of those particular parcels. We think that some of them can fit into the Metro Parks ownership pattern. So once again, thank you to you and to all staff.
Thank you. Sandra Ford, followed by Eric Paulson.
Thank you, my name's Sandra Ford, and I'm the group leader for Blueberry Park, and I want to thank you for doing this. I would hope that you get some good offers, but my best bet would be with Green Harbor Communities because I love their proposal on utilizing, how they're going to utilize the wetlands for educational purposes, help us make a better neighborhood, and we want to do a community garden in Blueberry Park. So we want to make it friendly for the kids, make it safe for the kids. And with you surplusing this property, just really makes, I can't even explain the words, I'm just so happy. But I'm hoping that we do get Green Harbor Communities in there, so this way, they can really do good work with that property and plus, help us keep that area safe for all the kids that live around there, especially that go to Larchmont Elementary School. Thank you, and I have some more comments, can I? Thank you so much.
Eric Paulson.
Good evening, members of the board, thank you for your time. My name is Eric Paulson, I'm also a Blueberry Park member, and just like my, that looks like a previous speaker, I'm also in support of the Green Harbor Communities proposal. And you guys seem to have answered a question I had about the, once you guys decided if you want to sell the land, that public will have input into any proposals that you guys are thinking of accepting, is that right? Purchases, so that's great. I just want to bring up a couple more points. Tacoma has an initiative that they're trying to reach a 30% canopy by 2030, and we're at about 19%. And any proposal that comes in and tries to mitigate the wetlands to another region entirely would drastically reduce Tacoma's tree canopy, and I am definitely opposed to that. And I also want to point out that wetlands provide a, sort of a canary in the coal mine for human health. So you know, for those of you who don't live near Blueberry Park, around in the springtime, you'll hear thousands of frogs, there's lots of animals, birds, and stuff that lives there. And that's really important for our health as human beings as well. And that is actually all I have, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes the testimony on Blueberry Park.
Thank you. This leads us to item number seven, which is members of the public wishing to address the board, and that's on any issue. School Board members, encourage public participation, and your input is very much appreciated. If you'd like to address us, please follow these simple steps. Complete a Citizens Request to Speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium, and submit the card to the School Board Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. If you submit a card after we've closed public comment, we won't hear it during the session. Superintendent Santorno will call your name when it's your turn to address the board. You're going to have up to two minutes to speak. You'll hear a bell, and that's a warning that you have a minute left, just so that you know what that is. And there's a timer right there.
First up, Sally Perkins, speaking regarding Opportunities in Equity, who will be followed by Tony Anderson, speaking regarding the George Nordy proposed stadium.
Good evening, President Oshka and Superintendent Santorno, members of the board. I'd like to speak tonight about the Smarter Balance test results that the board received as part of the early learning presentation on October 12th. I agree with Director Hines that the results were disturbing. Students of color scored well below the district goal for third-grade English Language Arts and Math, and this persistent gap is indeed disturbing. The gap is also present for fifth grade and eighth grade, ELA in math, over the last three years. I think there are four opportunities here that I hope the district will consider. Run equivalent data for report card standard results, district-wide by grade level, the composite overall report card results. By looking at those, you'll be able to compare them with the Smarter Balance and either confirm those or illuminate those results. Because the Smarter Balance test relies on computer proficiency, and some students have better access to computers than others, especially in the elementary grades, consider some kind of a digital tools opportunity for elementary kids, who would benefit from that extra opportunity. Utilize your first-rate team in your equity office to expand the number of professional development opportunities that focus on culturally appropriate teaching strategies, developing culturally meaningful relationships with students, understanding unconscious and implicit bias, et cetera. The district's equity team is excellent and could make an even larger contribution to student success with an investment of greater resources in their work. As part of the upcoming negotiations for the teachers' contract, include professional development requirements for all teachers, and ultimately, all district staff people, in cultural awareness and humility, equity, unconscious and implicit bias, and other culturally relevant professional development. Some examples are Race: The Power of an Illusion, Undoing Institutionalized Racism, Equity 101, and other offerings available from your equity office. Right now, you have a number of amazing teachers throughout the district who are working very hard on these topics individually. This is a major opportunity to address equity and anti-racism in a systemic way throughout the district. I believe if these opportunities are seized and implemented, we will see all students meet the district goals, and gaps will be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Anderson, followed by Susan Loesner, from the Tacoma Special Needs PTA.
Good evening, Madam President, Madam Superintendent, members of the school board. I would like to re-paraphrase on behalf of Cindy Adzes, Assistant Executive Director of the WIAA. She wrote, and you will have copies of this, renaming Mountahoma High School Stadium in honor of George Nordy as a fitting tribute to a man who impacted, literally, thousands of student athletes, their families, schools, and communities throughout his years of involvement. Another local icon, and really the last sports icon in our community, Mr. Doug MacArthur wrote, "George was a president of the Tacoma Athletic Commission twice, and president of the National Football Foundation's Pierce County Chapter six times. He may have won more honors and more awards than any coach in the history of Tacoma, and they were totally deserved." The WIAA realized this in 2000 when they awarded him the Gary Giles Memorial Recognition Award for his leadership and dedication to its member schools. In my 88 years in Tacoma, there are only a few coaches who stand out in my memory, and the name George Nordy deserves to be remembered among the legendary. I would just like to say, as a longtime friend of George's colleague, he was a mentor, and he was a friend. And he was a friend to every student, every day, and in every way that he spent in his 35 years here in the Tacoma School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Loesner.
Good evening, board members, my name is Sue Loesner. I'm a parent of two kids, one daughter, who attended Lowell from K through 5. And I have a son who's a fifth grader at Skyline Elementary, Go Skyhawks. I am here to speak to you tonight about the Tacoma Special Needs PTA. I am the president of the Tacoma Special Needs PTA, we're the newest PTA in Tacoma. We were formed in December of last year. We have a great number of members. We're trying to do our best to accommodate parents and learn from parents, and help other parents learn about advocating for their children in special education. We meet the second Tuesday of every month at Jason Lee Middle School, and we offer a variety of topics. We're a non-traditional PTA, a community-based PTA. We have the same rules and regulations of other PTAs, but we have a different way we conduct our meetings. We focus on parent education and enrichment and bring guest speakers in. I've provided packets to the secretary for you all because there's way too much for me to say in two minutes. But we're happy to be partnering with the school district in an effort to increase the communication between the school district and the parents of children who access special education in Tacoma. That's one of our main goals. You're all invited to our meetings. Ms. Winskill has been to one already, thank you for coming in September. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. When are your meetings?
Excuse me?
What are your meetings?
It's the second Tuesday of every month at Jason Lee, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speakers are speaking regarding technology. First one is Medina Broadnax, followed by Chris Crowe. I bet that's Medina, isn't it?
No, it's Medina.
It is?
So, hi, yes, I'm Medina Broadnax. I am a director of finance for an organization here in Tacoma. And I just wanted to touch just a little bit today on how important equitable access to technology is, especially for the students in Tacoma Public Schools. So at our organization, we hire interns from UW Tacoma, PLU, and other universities. And we have really high expectations of our interns. We expect that when they come in, they're familiar and they are able and capable to use Microsoft Office, several other applications, especially in the accounting and finance group. They really need to come in ready and able. We're not so much teaching them, we are expecting them to come in with a certain level of knowledge, and that's as a sophomore in college. So what I wanted to touch on is how important it is that students are exposed and have plenty of exposure to technology well before they get into college. So not just in high school, but in middle school and in elementary, so that by the time they get there, they're not closed out of certain opportunities just because they're not, you know, at that level that some of their other students may be at. Just because of, you know, students who have, are coming from a middle or upper school, upper-income family background, they're going to receive that sort of exposure at home because they just have parents maybe who are working in technology, laptops available at home, and just more able to use the technology and applications and maneuver through the different systems. And so I just wanted to say how important it is that the students who are coming from lower-income families have that exposure and education starting in elementary, so that by the time they get to college, they're not already so much further behind. Because, you know, just like I said at the beginning, we are expecting our interns, sophomores in college, to come in running. We're not going to teach you how to We're not gonna teach you how to use Microsoft Excel, like, we are expecting a very base, not even a basic, a pretty advanced level of knowledge at that point. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris Crowe, followed by Lois Halliday.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to weigh in. I'm speaking in favor of the tech levy. I'm a parent of two children in Foss High School and just wanted to spend a little time, as a technologist myself, stressing the importance of technology, especially in the high school years of education. It's increasingly important in both the tech industry and in most every job that I come into contact with, that they have a working knowledge of the Microsoft stack, of really a breadth of technology. And, and because of that, I think it's particularly important to fund technology education. And we'll see how many times I can lose my place as I, as I go through this in the one minute that I have left. And really want to encourage a partnership with technology and access to technology for everybody. It shouldn't matter whether the, you know, kids are, are kids of system administrators or affluent people, it should be universal to as many people as possible, because these skills are just so important and required. So, the more we can, can give the students, the better. So, thank you. I'll stop it there.
Thank you.
Lois Halliday, followed by Conrad Halliday. Conrad, you wanna go first?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. My sister Lois and I attend Grant Center for the Express of Arts. I'm in Mr. Johnson's fifth grade class and... I'm a first grader in Miss Taylor's K-1 class. This is my cousin Nathan. He's in preschool. At Grant, we learn to be creative. Of course, we learn the creativity of dance, drama, and visual arts. We also learn the importance of being creative in writing and thinking about math and science. We know the world needs more people who create. Recently, at the Tacoma Art Studio Tours, my family visited with artists who work in many different media, including one who used a computer to bring his art to life. It showed me there is so much more I can do, so much more I can create. Technology increases access to information and opportunity. I'm told some experts say kids my age will have about fourteen careers, I mean, different careers. I also heard sixty percent of the jobs I'll apply for will require an advanced degree or certification. When my classmates and I graduate, we want to be ready for those careers. We want to be creators of our future. To be ready, we will need to learn in environments rich in technology and be prepared for our future. Technology and computers help us because there are, there are tests, so our teachers know more about our learning. On a computer, I can read, I can explore anything. Well, I hope, we hope you agree, all kids should be able to grow with the best tools. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next is Katie Felix, followed by Kristi Paula Yost and Daniel Dingus.
I'm Katie Felix, Manitowoc Park kindergarten teacher, mom of a Truman student and a Sherman student. I've been very fortunate that we have been tech-focused at Manitowoc the last two years. When my students come to my classroom for the WA Kids Conferences, they're coming in, mom's trying to hand them their cellphone. These kids are coming in tech-savvy, but they don't know how to use technology in the Microsoft ways, the business ways. It's my job, even at kindergarten, to start teaching my students those skills. And they love it. This is the time to get them into that. I'm always thinking about what I can be doing to get my kids college and career-ready from day one. My kindergartners learn to use computers as a tool, just like they learned how to use counting bears, pencils, and crayons. We use them to listen to the Screen Actors Guild read us a story. They use OneNote to reread our shared poetry that I have been able to put audio recordings to for those students who can't read the words yet, and now they love singing the songs constantly with me, even my non-verbal students. I hear the little humming, so at least we're starting. My kids are using PowerPoint to be able to practice games. I really believe that technology needs to start at kindergarten. And with that, we're looking at global views. My kids Skyped with South Africa last year, and we got to watch the sunset at nine AM in the morning, and they're going, "Hang on, sunrise or sunset? What are you talking about?" We're also gonna do Mount, Mount Rainier next year, or next month. We're going global with our kids because employers want global people. They want people to know that there's a world all around us. They want, like we've heard, people to know how to use technology from day one when they're entering the workforce. If we are starting at kindergarten, they're gonna think this is normal. And then, when they hit that S-Back testing, they're not gonna have to think about, "Oh, how do I use this test? I know how to use the computer already, let me use it like a pencil." So, please vote, please go for the tech levy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Siegel, group, or Sieg, Paula? And Daniel?
Thank you. My name is Chris Sieg, and this is part of the Laptops to Kids Crew, and we are here to give a little testimony about the tech levy and give you a different perspective on somehow, on how some of the funds are used. Laptops to Kids employs students as district employees to refurbish surplus computers to be sent out to low-income students. The program currently employs six student employees through the Instructional Technologies Department that funds the student payroll. These students refurbish and distribute computers to thousands of low-income students. Hence the prop here, give you a visual of what thousands looks like. These students are receiving pay, credit towards graduation, and valuable work experience that aligns with their academic pathway. One interesting story is this, is about a year ago today, in a General Advisory Committee mini-meeting, I was asked a question by Karen Viall, Board Member Viall, regarding, she asked, "How many female students do you employ for Laptops to Kids?" And I thought that was a little more of a challenge than a question because we both knew the answer to that. So, what we, what I'm about to introduce, Paula Yost and I set out to make sure that we filled part of the gap that is in this industry. In the early nineties, there was thirty-six percent female in, in, in the computer industry. That, that has fallen. We have employed four students with a variety, diverse background equity, and some of them are here today with us, and I hand this over to Paula.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm just gonna introduce the students. This is Daniel Dingus, he's gonna speak to you, and Samam and Said, who were at the luncheon with me earlier in the week.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Dingus. I'm a junior at Foss IV World School, and I'd like to share a different angle about the proposed tax levy that most people would never think of. I understand the technology level levy is not only for computer equipment. However, I would like to share with you how Tacoma Public Schools is maximizing our taxpayers' technology levy dollars. I work with the Laptops to Kids at, at my school, and we take laptops, notebooks, and desktop computers that have aged out of service. We clean them, perform repairs, reimagine them, and then prepare them for distribution to eligible students in the district. We need to let the taxpayers know the district is being very good stewards with the money collected through the tax, I mean, the technology levies. And we're not using the equipment, equipment once, but we're using it twice and giving it back to the community in the hands of a student who can take it home to use it to succeed in school and elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Heavenly Cole, regarding technology, followed by Tracy Nguyen.
Heavenly Cole, Lincoln High School, Computer Science Teacher. I'm here to speak in support of the levy. About two years ago, we began to offer a high school computer science pathway. That pathway has included courses such as AP Computer Science Principles, Game Design, and Exploring Computer Science. At the heart of our pathway has been equity. With your gracious support and the support of Code.org, we've been able to begin to offer classes that we have never seen before. We would like to see continued support of our tech labs and building stronger infrastructure. We'd like to continue to build and strengthen the great work that we've just started in these last two years. That includes partnering with colleges and industry to offer internships. And we appreciate your support in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. I lost my place. Tracy?
I hope you guys are having a wonderful evening. My name is Tracy Nguyen, and I'm in eighth grade attending Baker Middle School. First of all, I'd like to thank my friend Emily for being here to support me and my teacher, Mr. Gibbs, who gave me so much knowledge about technology. I am here today to speak about the technology levy. Currently in computer science discoveries, we are learning how to solve problems using computer algorithms. Everyone here has been through a struggle that they had to overcome, whether it be family relationships or money. Especially in middle school and high school, we face problems with bullying and securities in schoolwork. Because of that, having problem-solving as a skill is useful. In class, we look at specific real-life problems and find the input, output, storage, and processing of the problem. All computers are programmed to use these four steps. Not only is it useful to know how to solve problems, but to understand computers as a whole. As of right now, technology is everywhere, is part of our everyday life, cars, phones, and even your house. Because we are advancing so quickly in science, it's important for kids or students in the modern-day world to understand how to use technology. Having basic or even advanced education of computers will be very useful in the future, which is why I believe the Tacoma Public School District should continue funding this program. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Kale? Kale Breeze?
Oh, Kale.
Kale Breeze? Sorry. Repeat it for me so I get it right when you come up.
Kale Breeze.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for inviting me to speak to you about technology for the blind. My name is Caleb Reese. I'm in third grade at Washington Elementary School. I love going to school because I like to learn new things. One example of what I like to learn is... is reading and writing in Braille. One important technology to help me with this is my, is the Braille note. I use it to type my schoolwork, like my, like my communication journal and other class assignments. I can al, well, I can also use it to search the internet, and I am hoping to use it for email soon. Another technology is my iPod, which I can use to listen to audiobooks because it adds voiceover. I will be able to use it for many other things. The, the screen reader tells me what's, what is on the screen of my computer at school. My printer lets me print in visual words whatever I type in Braille on the Braille note, or on the, oh, yeah, on the Braille. And then, I am very thankful for all of this technology. Even though I am blind, these things help me to do as well as my other classmates in school. I love school and I am happy that these things make it so that I can go to school, to school with my friends. I hope that the school board will keep giving funds to support technology for blind students so that we, that we can learn and be successful in school. Thanks for listening.
Would you say Kale's name? Kale Breeze? Is that what's the name?
Caleb.
Caleb Breeze. Thank you very much, Caleb Breeze. And John Page, follow that.
Good evening, President Oshka and Superintendent Santorno, members of the board and student representatives. And yes, that is a tough task to follow. We have amazing students and families in this district. I serve as the Director of Career and Technical Education. My name is John Page. And I received an email this morning from one of our students at Stadium High School, and I'm gonna read his testimony in support of running the tech levy. Some of you may know Adam Furman. Adam Furman, you might remember him from when he was in middle school, that he provided testimony to the Washington State Legislature advocating for technology education. He, if you, you may not know that we offered Advanced Placement Computer Science Education at Stadium High School four years ago, the first year of his freshman year, and Adam scored a five on that exam as a freshman. That's the highest score that you can score, it's a college credit-bearing score. Adam can't be here tonight because he's at a professional conference in Sun Cady, it's for the Washington State School Psychologist Conference. And Adam is presenting a phone app, he's marketing a phone app for tracking observations and developing interventions, a tool that psychologists can use. It's pretty darn cool. Anyway, here's an excerpt of what he wanted me to share with you. Tacoma Schools, Tacoma should fully fund and promote computer science education. This doesn't necessarily have to mean every kid becomes a master programmer, but it should certainly mean that most kids could logically break down a complex task into parts a computer could understand. It is this process of truly understanding the component, pieces of a larger whole, that computer science teaches. It is a way of thinking that cannot be explained in satisfactorily and rewardingly in any other classroom. Armed with these abilities, Tacoma's youth would have a distinct advantage in today's modern digital world. He goes on to say a little bit about his personal experience in computer science. He said that learning computer programming opened up my horizons. And though the material was often difficult, having a good instructor and resources made the process enjoyable. Computer science must be done right, a poorly-trained teacher, not enough resources, and other deficiencies can turn one of the most fascinating classes I have ever taken into dull drudgery. most fascinating classes I have ever taken into dull drudgery. This is why Tacoma needs to adequately fund computer science ambitions. We must recognize the benefits of offering this subject and ensure that all that take it walk away with an appreciation and understanding of the digital world in which we live.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public speakers.
Thank you. And before we go on to the next item on the agenda, I want to make sure that we acknowledge our student board members that are present. We want to welcome Will O- see your last name for me, I'm sorry.
O'Halloran.
It seems very simple, but it's very difficult to read. And Valeria de Villa Hernandez? See, that I can get right, so I don't know. Thank you, and we're glad you're here. Jump in at any time, and then from there, we're going to move on. So, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, and we're going to start with item eight point one, which is a levy update.
So I've asked Rosalyn Medina to come, and we're, we have the levy on the, our agenda to adopt the resolution, so I wanted her to give you an overview of what this levy entails. It's a, it's a little different, so we want to make sure our public understands it and sees what we're doing.
Good evening.
Thanks, Rosalyn.
Sorry, good evening. My intent is just to provide you with a brief understanding of what those resolutions will represent when you see them. There will be two resolutions on the agenda tonight. The timeline for how we got here, we worked with our technology committee to develop levy recommendations and uses. The technology advisory committee gets together quarterly or so, and they meet regularly to develop the three-year technology plan, and they helped to develop what will go into the resolution as to what types of technology supports would be used. Additionally, we did a survey to the public as to what types of activities they valued, both from the technology perspective and from the district perspective. We reviewed the new laws impacting levies. There were some pretty significant changes in House Bill 2242 that was adopted by the legislature, and so we made sure that we were in compliance with the legislative language. On September 21st, we brought to you in a board study session different options on the levy. We drafted and analyzed our resolution language, and we did that in consultation with both bond counsel and the county prosecutor's office to make sure that we were making the appropriate legal commentary and making sure that what our intent was, was both legal and appropriate. Additionally, on October 12th, we held a public hearing and did a first resolution reading. The first agenda item that you will see for this is Resolution 2031. This is a resolution that is for our maintenance and operations, our educational programs and operations. This is a replacement levy of our current levy. It will allow us to collect up to seventy, seventy-two million, seventy-four million, seventy-six million in the years nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two respectively. The Proposition One tax rates are indicated here. You'll see that it's a tax rate estimate of $2.72. If we were to collect the full value of $70 million in years 2019, and that amount actually decreases, the property tax rate per thousand decreases each year. I'll have a tax impact statement at the end. I do want to have some facts to note around the MNO levy. Our four-year average for the maintenance and operations levy is $4.11. So over the last four years, we've seen a tax rate of approximately $4.11. What the current law will allow, House Bill 2242 as it's written, is for us to collect $1.50, and that's what you see there in red. What this resolution asks for is the ability for us to collect up to $2.67, that's the four-year average. This is something that's a little bit different than what we've done in the past. However, we have in the past asked for more than what we've been legally allowed to ask for at a point in time. Our intent in providing the resolution with the higher value is so that we can seek as much money as the legislature will provide for us to seek, as it's within the parameters that we choose to seek from the district's perspective. I hope that's making sense, I'm just spewing words out there, right? So outside of the typical and the legal practice that we're putting in place here, we will only collect what the levy, what the law allows us to collect, which in the 2019 year, at this point in time, is $1.50. We want to make sure that what we're putting out to the public is, you know, transparent, honest representation. We're putting out the higher tax value because we want to say that in the situation where the levy allows us to go higher, we will be able to collect that, provide our students with the best education possible, and not do a bait and switch where we said it was going to be $1.50 and it's really a higher amount. Taxpayers will likely see a lower rate at this point in time on their taxes than what we're actually putting in the resolution. I'm going to stop and ask if there's any questions about what I just said.
Director.
So basically, we're going with the 2,500 per student calculation for the levy?
Correct.
Rather than the $1.50?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
When I look at Proposition Two, which is Resolution 2032, this is our technology levy. It's allowing us to collect up to $24 million a year for six years, which would total $144 million over that six-year period. Our Proposition Two rates, the average tax rate over the six-year period would be 85 cents. So you'll see in years 2019, a 93 cent tax and a levy amount of $24 million. Again, the tax rate declines, we keep a level amount of funding. From the homeowner impact, this includes both the levy, tech levy, and the maintenance and operations levy combined. The actual impact to a homeowner, based on what the four-year average would be, would be a decline of $29 per year in their taxes, even at that higher rate. So if it's actually collected at $1.50, we will see an even more significant savings. So this is our levy for the tech and our levy for the maintenance and operations combined, and that's the average homeowner impact.
Just, so people may look at this and see six years. Make it clear that this year, we're doing a six-year levy for tech rather than a four, is that correct?
Correct. And I wanted to be able to do it representative of the maintenance and operations.
Somebody's going to look at that and say, how come that's six rather than four, and we decided a six looked better, would be a better way for us to go than a four.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So when did we change that to six? Because I just noticed that when I read my material, and I didn't hear any discussion previously about that.
So we discussed it at the September 21st board study session, and I believe that the resolution that was included in the first reading also indicated a six-year levy.
Well, you know, when I looked at it, I thought it said four years, but I might be wrong. I was not at that meeting, so. So under this new proposal from the state, they also are going to levy a property tax, correct?
That is correct.
On education. So what will that be?
The average of what they're estimating right now is that it would be, over the four-year period, $1.3, $1.3. And if I go back just two slides and I look at our four-year average at the highest plate, let's just assume that we were taking the full amount, that we were actually able to collect, the $2.67, and I add in that tax rate from the state, that would put me at $3.70, where I'm currently at an average of $4.11.
And then another dollar almost for the tech levy on top.
Correct.
So I am concerned about this amount because the state really said we could collect about 33 million, correct? Isn't that?
It depends on where your assessed value is. They're saying 38 million right now.
Okay, 38 million. And last time, my information said 44, 42, 44, whatever.
From the state, yeah?
Pardon me?
From the state Director Winskill?
No. We, we had asked for that, and then I found out that we were really asking over 70. So this, I have been hearing, I heard Rob McKenna talk today, and he said that the spirit of the law was to get away from reliance on property taxes, local levies. And to me, this is keeping us at the exact level that we're at now, which is really high. And we have increased those taxes over the last couple of years, twice we've gone over the levy limit. Since I've been on this board, both of them are supposed to be temporary, neither of them have been temporary, they've morphed into permanent changes. I know that Issaquah actually is putting forth a bond issue, the same as they, or levy the same as they did before. They had a letter from three legislators who are not happy about it, and they feel like they are being given enough money. And I basically can't support it because I can just see, we can go out to our voters, they aren't going to understand. It's going to be like S.T., Sound Transfer III. They're going to see a big increase on their taxes, and they're not going to be very happy. So I just really can't support going for that much when the state has said you need to go for about half of that amount. So it's a concern.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I guess I'm confused now, because what I heard after the numbers were summed up is that even with the state amount, the total amount collected would be pretty close to what the average is of what's being collected now.
With the dollar added to the 2.67, we would actually be about 80 cents less.
Right. So with the state adding the tax that they're going to add, with the levy for technology and with the maintenance and MNO, it's still $80 less than current collections?
Eighty cents.
Approximately. Let's just be clear that I'm not using a calculator up here. So I just want to state that because I'm confused by from what Director Winskill just said in terms of it being an increased rate.
So if our collection is going to be $70 million, we're currently collecting $86 million. There will be a decline in what we collect. We would not be collecting what we're collecting currently. There would be a shift over from local dollars to state dollars.
Sure.
And I would like to add that the Issaquah situation is different. They're actually seeing an increase in their levy, and they're receiving state funding. Our situation is that we're losing local levy dollars, and we're not being fully offset by the state's new monies. So their situation is that they're being asked by the legislatures not to go for an increased amount because they're going for even more than what they were currently being given, and then beyond that.
Except that with our technology level more than doubling, going up 150%, that is putting us way up there. And I have always thought that our property taxes were very high in Tacoma, comparing to other people in the state, and I have been looking forward to a decline. I think most of my neighbors are looking forward to a decline. I just am not in favor of this over 70 million annually, when the state has said you need to reduce that by almost half.
Well, this is apples to oranges in my mind, because the $1.50 will generate, what are they saying, 38 million now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's what we're allowed to generate if we go with the $1.50. The problem is, we're at 87, correct, now on our levy?
86 million.
86, I'm sorry, okay. So we are short approximately $48 million for the next budget cycle compared to where we are now, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if we looked at what the state gave us, in theory, they did not, they did not hold us harmless by picking up that additional $48 million. I believe our share was about 30, and a lot of that we can't even use. So I think the question that we have before, so we would all like to pay lower property taxes. But the question is, for us, I think as a board, what are our responsibilities? And for, for me, our responsibilities are, we're not raising the taxes, we're asking our, our voters to do so. And they have been generous to this school district in supporting us going back to 1940. They have never failed a levy. We've had to do it twice, once or twice, but we've never done that. Our people believe in our schools, and I think we as a board owe it to our students to fund at the level that we are now. I think if, having gone through state government, that where we had to make some catastrophic type cuts, that we could have to do that in this school district, and I personally am not willing to do that. And I don't think the members of our community are willing to see this school district go backwards rather than forward. So I'm going to support going for the 2,500 per student, unless the legislature magically makes up and holds us harmless. That would just keep, that wouldn't even actually hold us harmless, even if we go at the 70, we're still 16 million short. But that's a manageable, I mean, I don't want us to have to do it, but it's manageable, it's a manageable cut, given the size of our, of our budget. And it means that we're going to have to tighten up the belt and figure out what we're doing, and thankfully, we've gone to budgeting by priorities that would help us have to do that. So I guess as I sit up here and I look at every student every day, and what I think my job as a board member is, it's to hold this school district harmless and to ask our voters to, once again, continue to support what our kids sitting across here do and the programs that we heard tonight for both the tech levy and the MNO levy. So I'm going to, I think I'm going to ask, ask us as a board, we often do this, to support, to support this, keeping in mind that this isn't just dollars, this is about the impact on our kids if we have to make these cuts. And the ability, as Sally said, to get those scores up and reinvest. If we don't have that money, we can't. And this is what this is about, is staying where we are, the ability, and we manage our finances very, very well in this school district. We don't, we win national awards, we're not looking at, you know, being in trouble or raising too much money and things like that. So I guess, not I guess, I, I would be very disappointed if we did not put that on for the $70 million and see what our voters say, and I think I know what they're going to say, it will be yes. Thank you. And I think.
Sorry.
Ms. Vidia?
I just want to, you know, as I'm looking at the numbers and trying to reach Director Winskill's point, the current, between the tech and the MNO right now, is we collect $4.59 in tax, the tax rate is $4.59. With the tech and the MNO and the state all together, we would be at $4.55, so.
So we're staying even.
Yes, we're even in the situation that the state allows for an increase. And that's assuming that the state allows us to go up to $2,500. We're only putting ourselves in a situation where we could go up to $2,500. They could come back and say that we're going to go $2,000 across the state and change the rules for everyone. I don't know. But we're putting ourselves in a, we're positioning ourselves for the ability to go out and seek additional revenues and hopefully not have to do any kind of major reductions in light of where we're at now.
Thank you. Vice President Cobb?
In this question, conversation about levies, I just think that we need to understand what the full picture is, and you've given us that with the $4.55. But I feel like the conversation at the state level and locally here in our district about operations levies versus technology levies is two different conversations. I think the issue around McCleary and the issue with basic ed funding is about operations levies. It's our maintenance and operations levies and the extent to which we rely on them to fund basic education. But the question about technology is different to me because there's no plan from the state to fund technology more richly than it currently does. The line items in the model are in MSOC for a little bit of technology, and they're nowhere else, really. So that infrastructure for technology, the, all of what we need, and we've discussed tonight and in our previous meeting, all of what we need to ensure that students have access to the technology and educators have access to the technology to meet these rigorous standards is a separate conversation, but related, because the total number is important for our voters, but it's a different kind of values and next steps in our innovation and ability to meet the needs of our kids. It's a different conversation around technology to me than MNO. So I appreciate the discussion about the whole dollar amount because we need to have that, but when we talk about this increase in our technology levy, it really is an increase, a true increase, because we need to step up what we're doing related to technology. And so I just want to reiterate that point or make that point from where I sit. This issue around technology is connected to the larger whole, but it really is an important issue. Where we are, the question on the table is, do we want to increase our ability to meet our needs related to technology? And that big jump is, that big jump in our tech levy is a big part of the total amount. And so I just want to get us to talk about the value of that increase separately from this larger discussion around the maintenance and operation levies.
Appreciate that. Superintendent Sanino?
Actually, that was my issue. I wanted to make sure that we made that clear. And the other thing that's important to me, and the staff and Calvin have talked about a lot, is that we do want the public to understand the difference between, you know, what we currently have been allowed, you know, to ask for from the law and what we potentially could.
you know, to ask for from the law and what we potentially could. That we're not trying to do a bait and switch, which is why we have the numbers up there. We want it to be clear that right now we're limited to the dollar fifty. But, and if the legislators come together and change that, we want to be able to get the, get that levy amount that will take us to the same, to the same place that we've been before to support the things that we've done in the district.
Could I be the historian here? Not very often do I do that, but.
With some brevity, that would be great.
It's very, it's very, very blunt. In nineteen eighty-three, they did a levy swap. This district lost a significant amount of money, as did big school districts. And that's when they came back and did the grandfather because it's same, it's almost like deja vu all over again. And it did not work and it, it looks like, as what numbers were seen across the state from other school districts, that we're going to have the same issue in terms of being able to sustain where we are in spending given with our assessed valuation. And, and I think, I appreciate Vice President Cobb's comments on the technology conversation. And I think what I, I have been, done these things for other school districts, we did some work many years ago, that if we do not pass the M and O and pass the technology, we may not have the ability to use the technology, quite frankly. And I think they, they are, they are joined at the hip. As we move forward with curriculum that is technology dependent, we don't have the teachers and the staff and have to make those cuts. Then we're going to have a lot of technology money that frankly, we can't, we can't use and fund. So they are separate, but yet in my mind, they are conjoined. So thank you. But the state's been down this path before and there's some discussion now, real quick in Olympia, that, oh shoot, we don't want to do that again. And I was with Mr. Miller involved in doing some of that work. So thank you.
Thank you. I guess I just want to bring it back to like the regular average homeowner's perspective, right? I've been on, worked on bond campaigns and levy campaigns for this district long before I ever sat at this D S. And by and large, you know, you end up trying to explain things that, you know, levies are for books and bonds are for buildings. Technology is for computers, right? So there's some complexity to this that just doesn't get conveyed to the broader public easily whatsoever. I think there's a challenge here and I appreciate what Director Winskill is saying and that the legislator's intent was to remove our reliance on local levy dollars. The challenge is, is that they removed enough funding and didn't replace it so that we're left with a hole. So without the levy, we're looking at cuts. As it is, we're looking at a loss even with the levy, right?
Yes.
So there's that piece. And to the average homeowner, that, that, you know, your taxes are not going to go down that much, but they're not going up. I think a lot of people across even here don't realize that when we do levies and bonds, we're not adding to something that's on there forever. They expire every four to six years and go to zero unless we pass them again. It goes to zero. I just want to make sure that we're really clear about that because a lot of this conversation about how it works in Olympia and everything else becomes confusing and it sounds like we're saying we want to raise taxes to do extraordinary things with schools. And we don't. We want to collect a similar amount of money overall as we are now. And part of that is tech money that's a new fund. And we are going to do extraordinary things with that because our kids deserve it. But, but we're not asking to, people to pay higher taxes. I, I do appreciate that, that taxes are high, particularly for people that are.
I'm kidding.
Are growing older and own their homes and have higher taxes, it's a challenge. And there's legislative solutions that we need to find for that in Tacoma as housing costs rise. And as a school district, we can partner with our other leaders across the city to help work on that as well. But we have to fund our, our students. We have to make sure that we continue to create young citizens that are college career ready. Otherwise, we can go back to being the dropout factory of two thousand and eight. And I don't think that that's the direction that we want to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, that being said, do you have further comments?
I have one last slide which just talks about where we're going from this point, assuming that there's approval this evening for what is being considered. We would do some review of our election rules with staff. We would begin our communications with the public around what levy impacts are for the school district. We would file our resolution with the county auditor by December fifteenth. Ballots and election dates are, ballots would go out on the twenty-sixth. Election date is the thirteenth of February. So just to give you the final say of what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is number nine. It is the consent agenda. Before I request a motion on this, I just want to clarify for those here and those viewing that the consent agenda contains a whole lot of information that's about the continuing operations of the school district. It's travel requests, it's making sure the payroll gets done and items of that nature. All of us have received this information in advance. We've had a chance to ask questions and that sort of thing. And I say that because we're going to ask for a motion and approve a whole lot of things in one fell swoop, unless we don't because the vote has not yet been taken. So that being said, is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second. That motion.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the consent agenda? Sing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Sing none, motion passes four zero. Scrolling down to item number ten is policy matters. There are no policy matters this evening. Item number eleven is the quarterly financial update. There is no quarterly financial update for consideration this evening, but you can look at tacoma schools dot org about finance to find more information in the meantime. Item number twelve is curriculum and instruction. There are no items there. Item number thirteen is business matters. Thirteen point one is acceptance of Title Two Part A grant from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Assistant Superintendent K twelve support on behalf of the, for the Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors accept the award of Title Two Part A grant in the amount of one million two hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Funding source, O S P I.
I move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Sing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Sing none, motion passes four zero. Item number thirteen point two is the acceptance of Title Four Part A grant from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Assistant Superintendent K twelve support for the Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors accept the award of the Title Four Part A grant in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Funding source, Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
I move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. And Director Cobb, did you have a comment? Please.
This is a new grant, correct?
Yes.
So I understand that you can, there are a lot of allowable uses of these funds and I understand the reduction in Title Two funds that happened at the same time that this was introduced. But as we think forward about this grant and, and depending on how all of the budgeting things work out, have you had any conversations about potentially using these funds for other, some of the other allowable activities that are included? Or is it just our plan longer term to continue to use it to backfill Title Two?
I, I believe at this point, it's pretty much the same. It's, you know, it, it provides professional development for some of our private schools. It does help us a little bit with coaching, support for our teachers in that arena. I think that it's a decrease from years past.
The Title Two has decreased and so we shifted expenses over to Title Four. And it was since it was a new grant. Our intent was to try and balance the budget and backfill. So could we use it differently in the future? Sure, we can do all kinds of things.
Seems to me that part of it'll be in our continuing discussions about budget. And as we determine what those priorities are and what we really need, then we certainly will be looking at everything and the best way to blend or, you know, look at those funds. So you're right, that discussion may change over time.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
I'd just like to caveat to that. Let's be careful about what we start messing with till we really know budgets and allocations, till we really know where we are financially and then take a look at as we go through our priorities and where we can use funds and not use funds. So look at the big picture and then back into it. And I think we're not quite there yet and appreciate, appreciate knowing that there's flexibility in that grant. But I didn't get a lot of this old gray hair and Sally didn't get hers. We went through that same thing together and we know what that's like. So if we can keep big picture in mind and then look where the holes are and, and then fill them. So just, just a word from an old wise person, maybe not so wise, but an old person. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions and comments? Sing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Sing none, motion passes four zero. Item number thirteen point three is the approval of the University of Washington College and the High School Interagency Agreement for two thousand seventeen eighteen.
Assistant Superintendent of K twelve support on behalf of the Executive Director of Secondary Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interagency agreement between the University of Washington and Tacoma Public Schools for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Funding source, payment by students directly to the University of Washington.
I move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Director Winskill?
Just want to make a comment that this is a good proposal because they get a really cut rate for getting credits to the U and they won't take A P scores. So this is a great way to go when it goes to, comes to college credit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from the board? Sing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Sing none, motion passes four zero. Item number thirteen point four is the approval of addendum interlocal agreement with Puget Sound Education Service District, P S E S D relive.
Assistant Superintendent of K twelve support for the Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Students Support Services recommends the Board of Directors approves the addendum to the interlocal agreement with P S E S D for period of November one, two thousand seventeen through August thirty-first, two thousand eighteen and any subsequent contract renewal.
Move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. Any questions or comments from the board? Sing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Sing none, motion passes four zero. Item number thirteen point five is the approval of the Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant Application for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Assistant Superintendent of K twelve support on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve submission of the Carl Perkins Grant Application with the district-wide plan and plan for annual program evaluation with the Career and Technical Education Department. Funding source, the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
I move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Sing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Sing none, motion passes four zero. This moves us on to item number fourteen, which is other business. Fourteen point one is the adoption of Resolution Number twenty thirty-four, authorizing the surplus and intent to sell Blueberry Park parcels.
Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number two zero three four and approve the surplus and intent to sell the twenty-four parcels of real property associated with Blueberry Park.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have quite a few. I have quite a few comments. So we almost built a school at this site a couple, about a dozen years ago. We built it at Stafford instead. So at that point, it was worth building on. When I hear all the people come forward, you know, it is a concern, all the crime in that area. And I, I, I just feel like maybe we fell down on the job as a school district and as a city, going out there and protecting those people, having a significant police presence and trying to help that community through all these problems. And so I feel really bad about that for these people. I, I'm, I know that, and our lawyer might be able to help with this. If we put this property up for sale, we have to sell to whoever has the best price. And we cannot determine what people are going to do. Is that, isn't that correct?
Not, not exactly. The first step in the process, what we're asking you to do tonight is to declare the property as surplus. And then we'll put it up for sale and then we can consider the bids that come in. And at that point in time, the board can still choose, even in the face of bids that come in, to not sell the property. So it still gives you an opportunity to see what bids come in and then you may still choose to not sell.
I think one of your questions, Director Winsell, is do we have to sell to the lowest bidder?
No, highest bidder.
I mean, that's what I meant, is highest bidder. We have options about the use of the, the sale of the property, you know, also like if it was going to be a pig farm and we decided we didn't want a pig farm, we don't have to sell it to a pig farm even if they have the highest bid. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, Superintendent. As long as it's at ninety percent of the appraised value, then we can make a choice about the best use of the property that we believe in the community interest in the decision of the board.
I just want to say I'm really conflicted about selling our last big piece of property because when I look at this small class size, I know we don't have the money now, but at one point we may need new schools and there's, there's no land left in Tacoma to build.
And just one other point on that, that even though this seems like a very large piece of property, it's thirty-two acres. Thirty-two acres of it are wetlands and buffer and only about five or six acres is available for development.
Yeah, I do, I do understa, no, that I, I do know that there's wetlands. I think we're going to mitigate those wetlands, but so I will say that I am in favor of the park's position to buy that, or, you know, to possibly in the future buy part of that land. But that's not for sale right now. But so I'm.
Director Vial?
That five acres, I believe the state has certain standards for construction vis a vis the amount of acreage that's, that we have to meet for new construction.
I believe that it's zoned R two for single family development.
I meant for school construction. I know there's a certain amount of acreage that is required for building of school buildings, new construction. If we're, if it's not new construction, we can build on a smaller footprint.
Ten acres.
Ten or whatever that is. And I, it seems to me that that five isn't going to make it. Went through this when we were doing some looking at stuff when in another job that I had about twenty years ago, about what city selling some property for a school and it did not meet whatever that was.
And I know that one of the things that, that Mr. Williams has talked about and Mr. Maricomi before is that we don't see in the near future a need, you know, for building another elementary school. We've talked about, you know, some of the increase in population on the west side, which might demand that we look at, you know, another property that's adjacent to Hunt to build an elementary school. And the problem is, is that as long as we own that property next to Blueberry Farm, there's an expectation that we maintain it and that we clear it and it is just an exorbitant cost. We, we don't have the funds to continue the work it takes to patrol it.
I'm in favor of selling. I just want to make that point that I don't think we could given the wetlands and the wetlands and all that. Go build a, go build another school there. And so I'm in favor of, of selling it and if it can be something that benefits the neighborhood. And kind of sad because when I, I was around when it was set up to be a park and then obviously times have changed unfortunately in that neighborhood. And hopefully putting housing in there and in the R two, which is single family, will improve the neighborhood and, and still help allow retention of Metro Park's portion of that. So I'm in favor of selling it.
Thank you. I just want to say that I don't think that we fell down on the job in this, in this regard. Our, our job is not to mitigate homeless camps and impact crime. Our job is to educate students. So part of the challenge with this property is, is that it's taking dollars out of the classroom to do a job that we are not experts at. This gives an opportunity for somebody who is an expert with highest and best use to improve the quality of lives for neighbors. They're dealing with a high impact of criminal activity that's right next door to their houses. I've lived in that environment before. It affects the attitudes of your children when they go to school and they have to drive by that. It affects the safety that you feel when you're out in your garden. It changes your ability to enjoy the walkability of your neighborhood or even get to know your neighborhoods. So I'm strongly in favor of this because I think it's time that we make sure that it's in the hands of somebody responsible. That being said, as we pass this and we say, okay, it's surplus, it can go for sale, that's not the end of community input. We could take in proposals, we could float it out there. And if the community said, no, Superintendent Surturno, a pig farm will not be an improvement, we can come back and say, never mind, we're not going to do a pig farm.
I always forget we're on TV.
And typically with our, with our outreach process that we've gone through with buildings and we went through this after some of the challenges that we had with the old Rogers School and some of the challenges that happened with Golt, is that we've made it a more robust process that ensures at least, at least two community output sessions or input sessions that are during hours that most neighbors can meet. So not at ten AM on a, on a Wednesday when most people in the area are at work. We know that there are people identified in community groups with special interests in this project, so we'll make sure that they're reached out to also. So I just want to say that, I mean, our job as a school is also to be a great neighbor to our community because we are the community. to our community, because we are the community, and so I will support this measure, and I hope the rest of our Board members will too. You have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to add one about the cost to maintain the property. We're scheduled to clean the property twice a month, and it's sixty-five dollars an hour for personnel to clean, so it's a significant dollars that we're allocating towards maintaining the property.
And yet, every time that you go, it's also, it's in a place of.
It definitely opposes risk to, to staff when we clean that, definitely.
Right. Okay. Further questions and comments from the Board? That being said, there's a motion that's been seconded, we've discussed it. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing none, motion passes four zero. I want to say thank you to my Board members for that one. Item number fourteen point two is to adopt Resolution Number twenty thirty-one, authorizing the form of the ballot proposition and other matters concerning submission to the voters at a special election to be held on February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Move approval. I'm sorry.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution two zero three one, authorizing the form of the ballot proposition regarding the educational programs and operations replacement levy, Proposition One, and other matters concerning submission to the voters at a special election to be held on February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
I will move approval.
Second.
Item has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Director Wenskill?
I'd just like to reiterate that this is almost double what the state thinks that we should be asking for. They want us to do away, to move away from reliance on local levies. This is not doing that. With the added technology levy, it's up to about ninety-four million, which is a lot of money for our taxpayers, and we did get a significant increase this year from the legislature, and I think that they're scheduling to do that every year in the future to mitigate those property taxes, and I hope that we aren't going to go forward now to legislature and say, oh, we, our citizens wanted us to collect all this money, and that that becomes one of our priorities, because that would be disingenuous, I think.
Thank you, and I just want to reiterate that this is not a increase in taxes, it's a replacement tax, and overall, that will give a higher value to our technology for our students and the global economy. That is not a decision that we'll be making, it's a decision to ask our voters to make the decision, so should it pass, it will in fact be at the bequest of the voters of the City of Tacoma. Are there any further questions or comments?
Just one comment I want.
Director Viall?
Madam President, you said the tech, this is the M and O levy, which is the replacement levy to continue.
Sorry, I put it all together.
It's okay, put it all together, to make sure that, we know that they're separate. This is a replacement levy, it's not an increase in, in the tax rate that we have now, even when we add everything up together, and it will allow us to continue to be one of the most innovative school districts in the country, and continue to move forward with our, with where we are going as, as a district, and it's a replacement again, we always call it a replacement, and it just simply will basically mean, I think, you know, it's not raising any taxes, it's simply replacing and holding at the same level so that we can, as you very well eloquently said a few minutes ago, we're about educating kids, and this will allow us to continue to educate kids at a high level.
Thank you.
I'm just reflecting back on the study session and meeting we had, one of our discussions previous to this on this M and O levy, and reflecting back on the fact that this gives, if, there's a lot of movement in between now and when this first year of collection happens, there's a whole legislative session in between, so I just want to reflect back on our discussions about the fact that this gives us the option to collect up to the equivalent of that twenty-five hundred dollars per pupil, but it doesn't require us to, so we still have a great deal of movement, of flexibility in between one fifty per pupil and that two dollars and sixty-seven cents, so I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you for that clarification. Superintendent Santoro?
I think it's also too, it's important to, to make sure our public under, public understands also. Director Wenskill's right, you know, that we got an increased amount of, you know, you know, funding, and that the intent of the legislature is that we have less reliance on the levy. What that means, though, that in concert with that, we have to have flexibility with the money that we do get, and we don't have any flexibility, so we, right now, and it's just like Director Cobb said, some of those things may change over the next legislative sessions that will enable us to, you know, to be able, to operate on the, on a less, a less amount of this, but right now, where we are, is between a rock and a hard place.
And I would add to that, Superintendent, that, you know, in that situation, that the legislature were to approve a higher amount, that would be the legislature acknowledging that what they've provided for us wasn't an appropriate amount, and that they would be allowing us to take a different rate.
Right.
It's not at our discretion.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Sing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes three to one. Next is item fourteen point three, is that correct I've gotten?
That is correct.
Thank you, which is the adoption of Resolution Number twenty thirty-two, which is authorizing the form of the ballot proposition regarding school technology improvements and upgrades, and other matters concerning submission to the voters at a special election to be held on February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number two zero three two, authorizing the form of the ballot proposition regarding the school technology improvements and upgrades levy, Proposition Two, and other matters concerning submission to the voters at a special election to be held on February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
I just want to make a comment that.
Director Wenskill.
That, you know, as Director Cobb said, the state is not providing money in this for technology, and it's up to us to do this. I do think this is really high, and I would really like to see a really detailed plan of how we're going to spend this money, but.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from the Board? Director Cobb?
I'd like to echo Director Wenskill's desire to see a detailed plan of spending, too.
Absolutely. Further questions or comments from the Board? Sing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing none, motion passes four zero. Next on the agenda is item fourteen point four, which is the approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP Amendment Number Three, Third Bid Package, for the contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Skanska USA Building.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the GMP Amendment Number Three, which states the Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP, for the third bid package on the Browns Point Elementary School project, and authorize the Superintendent or designated to sign said GMP Amendment Number Three in the amount of ten million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars, excluding sales tax. Funding source, capital projects, bond as approved by voters on February twelfth, two thousand thirteen.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from the Board?
I have one.
Director Viall?
One question. Mr. Williams, it's my understanding we have one more package coming before us after this.
Correct, we have one more bid package. I know the Board historically is used to probably one bid package, but the GCCM process allows multiple bid packages. Obviously, this is something we're looking to change, so we don't have to continue to go through this process in the future.
Yeah, because my editorial comment for the evening is, the process that we've used is supposed to save us money, and quite frankly, it hasn't, so I would hope that we would be, as we get toward the end of this, that we're going to a process and have confidence in you and the new director for building, and that you're going to correct this for us in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Wenskill?
So, I got a lot of background information. I didn't need a lot of that background information. I kind of liked just to know how many people bid on projects, but in the past, when we've done, we started GCCM, we started with Stadium, I think, and that was because of the uncertainties, and I don't know that there's really uncertainties in new construction, you know, it's like, you have an old building, you're going to take the walls down, you have no idea what's behind them, so, yeah, I don't know how necessary it is to do GCCM in the future, but that would be just something, have a good discussion about that, the benefits.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Sing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sing none, motion passes four zero. Item number fourteen point five is the first reading of the renaming of Mount Toma Stadium to George Norby Memorial Stadium, per policy ninety, six nine seven zero R facilities naming.
So, I asked James Neal, who headed the, pardon? Committee, sorry, yeah, headed the committee for the naming of the Mount T Stadium. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Madam President, Oshka, and Board members, and Superintendent Santoro. My name is James Neal, I'm the Director of Athletics and Activities, and I am proud to stand here, having the baton passed to me by Dr. Jennifer Cavista, who started this committee before she left, and the committee strongly recommends the proposal to change the name of Mount Toma Stadium to George Norby Memorial, George Norby Memorial Stadium. The committee reviewed George Norby's career and impact in Tacoma Public Schools. He worked at Mount Toma High School from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen ninety-six, where he taught business and physical education. During the thirty-five years, he served as student body advisor, a boys' coach for swimming, tennis, wrestling, and football. The highlight of his career was two state football championships at Mount Toma, nineteen seventy-nine and nineteen eighty, and is still the only Tacoma football coach to have two back-to-back state championships. During his career, he's also involved in West Central District, WIAA, National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. In two thousand, the WIAA honored George Norby with the Gareth Giles Memorial Recognition Award, recognizing those persons whose service to the ideals and purpose of the WIAA Representative Assembly exemplify the leadership and dedication given to students and members of schools. He's a six-time past president of the Tacoma Athletic Commission, and throughout his career, he received many honors and awards. I've received a ton of emails and phone calls in regards to the support of this agenda item, and would continue my support of this movement. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question for the Superintendent. When we went through agenda review, this was not a first reading, it was a hearing with the option of voting on it, we had a robust discussion during that conversation of agenda review, of seeing what our options were and what the committee's timelines were. Do we know why we're on first reading now? And I'd like you to stand there, because I'm concerned about what the expectations of the committee are.
I can, I can speak to that.
That agreed.
So, after speaking to several of the committee members, we decided with such a short timeline, our hope is that if this is approved, that we would present at a football game, and the football season is nearly over, and we would really, if this is approved, like to take the opportunity to plan an event that would honor George Norby and the family, and those people who also respect him and their, their history, and have an opportunity to attend a ceremony, so if approved, we would make a plan to do an unveiling during the two thousand eighteen nineteen football season.
That was in my understanding of our next steps. We did put it in for two, a reading separated by an action, so that if we had anybody in the public that wanted to talk about it, that we could. Certainly, there's been, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is that perhaps we need to add to our, I think, it wouldn't be the policy, but it would be the regulation, that, that in the, in the future, that perhaps the committee comes to the Board and talks about their intent, that has nothing to do with these guys, this is not how the regulation reads now, but that they could come and talk to you about the intent of naming before, you know, so that you wouldn't, the first time you heard of it wasn't at the, you know, the dais when they're coming to ask for it. So, that's one of the policy things we've talked about. We've also had conversations about perhaps having sponsorships of stadium naming, and at the cabinet, we talked about it and decided it doesn't preclude still having a sponsor around the stadium, so. These guys actually started this process in what, last?
Oh, last year this time.
Last February or so.
Just going to comment.
So, I, I just want to say really quickly, though, I guess my challenge is, is that between the approval of the agenda and doing the agenda, it shouldn't change.
So, the only thing that changed was that it was supposed to be on, it was, yeah, it was on, it's been on this agenda the entire time. It was originally on.
Yeah, it's been on this one.
An early date.
But it's not what we discussed during our agenda review, so I suppose I'll just have to make sure that we, everybody knows that regardless of what we approved during the meeting, we need to double check what's published. Okay?
Sorry. We'll have to talk about it. I, I'm not aware of.
So, we're not in a, so I also understood that the committee was.
We're not voting tonight.
I know that we're not now.
I'd like to.
I know that we're not now. So, my, my other concern was that now you're looking at the eighteen nineteen school year anyway, right? You're not worried about?
Yeah.
Okay. That was not the information we had there either. Director Viall?
Yeah, and, and Director, or Superintendent Santoro knows that I asked for, for this to be looked at a year ago. I personally knew George Norby very, very well, or his son Scott coached our boys, was an assistant coach at Foss, and this is, you know, something that should be done to honor George and his contributions, not only to Mount Toma, but to Tacoma School District in general. He wasn't just a Mount T athletic director, he cared about all the kids, and I personally saw that when one of our kids was injured in a football game there, and George took charge, and it was at, at Lincoln Bowl, and anyway, Jenny asked, Jennifer Caviska, said to me, you know, George, do you think this is something we should do? And I said, absolutely. So, I said, I can't be a member of the committee, because I'm on the board and I have to vote on this, but, and I had a discussion, if you remember, Carlo, with you, about how we should do this and make sure that we crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is, and the committee went through that process, so I hope that next board meeting, that we will approve this, and because in my mind, we have not done enough of this in Tacoma honoring those who've come before us in terms of a number of our facilities probably should have been name changed for some of our prominent citizens, and haven't been done, and George certainly is, his, George and his family, it's a family deal for the Nordies, certainly deserve this honor, so I would hope that we would, we would do this, and then plan a great community event, because George was extremely well-respected, not only just in the athletic community, but in the Tacoma community at large, so, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Cobb?
When this came before us in the agenda review, I heard a couple of questions come up for me. One was whether or not any other stadiums have been named for anyone?
In regards to our football stadiums, no.
And then, so my follow-up comment then is, I absolutely think that we should be in the business regularly of recognizing prominent citizens and folks who have contributed to the success of our communities just broadly, and then to our students, but I do have a little bit of concern about naming stadiums after individuals. Not, I'm not concerned about, like, having a plaque or a memorial, but just that, there's only some, a handful, and who we, as a collective, point to as the, those who are worthy of being recognized, is influenced only by a subset of our community, and through time, that changes. So, I am in favor absolutely of recognizing people who have done, who have spent their lives contributing to the success of others, but the naming of what is only a handful of physical facilities, and the process that surrounds that, and who's included in it and who's not, is something that I'm concerned about.
Thank you.
I know our gymnasiums are, some of them are named after people.
Foss is, it's named for Wayne Delesky and Jim Black, so, who my, one of, two of my sons had the privilege of being coached by Wayne Delesky, so.
I kind of agree with Andrea, just having a plaque or something, not naming it, I mean, and people get confused about where it is. I like the idea of Mount Toma Stadium, because then everyone knows it's at Mount Toma. If you start saying Nordy Stadium, we may not know, but I don't know how we can get around that. I mean, he's certainly worthy of being honored, absolutely.
We had some dialogue when we were in agenda review about the same issue, and part of the thing that we suggested is that it's, that we have a policy, that when it's up, whenever it's written, it says George Norby Stadium at Mount Toma, or something like that, so we don't disconnect it from the physical location that people identify with.
I was just going to provide for clarification, President Oshka, Regulation sixty-nine forty provides for that, it's up to the Board to choose to approve or not, and the policy and regulation also provide that we can name a building, a field, a stadium, and also theaters, auditoriums, gymnasiums, and librarian, libraries as well.
Cool.
So, whether it's, I think we've gone above and beyond also with the first reading and second reading, just because I think the Superintendent wanted to provide plenty of time for discussion on this, but it just requires simple Board approval.
Thank you.
And quite frankly, I think that's why we're having first reading, because that's what I asked of Carlo on behalf of the people that came to me, that make sure we did have an opportunity here to discuss it, rather than just approve it right away and make sure. an opportunity here to discuss it rather than just approve it right away and make sure that all the Ts and Is and everything were dotted and crossed. And I wanted to make sure, just my relationship with the Nordie family, that this was done correctly.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the work of the committee and everything else for the course of the year. There's a lot of work that goes into it.
Yes.
So, are there further questions or comments?
So if the board, you know, really wants to explore Director Cobb's ideas further and have some, you know, options and relook at the policy and/or the regulation, I ask, you know, I just ask that you give me some specific direction about it, okay? Not now, but.
I hope we don't get that caught up in what we're gonna do with naming the Mount T Stadium at this point.
No, no, not, no.
And so we do that and look, look in the future.
Yes.
And I, I, I wanna go back and look at the policy before and see if it really does need to be a total review, or if it needs to be tweaked, or, or whatever, and see where we are. Because I know we've talked about this before.
Okay.
You know, and over the years, and I, I know when they renamed the gym and, and stuff at, at Foss, that was a big deal, and it was to honor those who have given their, you know, a whole lot of work, and that was, both those guys were amazing coaches. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions and comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is item number 15, which is the report to the board. 15.1 is the annual safety report.
Tony, can you make sure you introduce Laura again?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Remember who she is.
Obviously, I'm not Dr. Josh Garcia. I'm going to step in for him this evening, but I'd also like to introduce to you Laura Allen, who's our new director of the Whole Child, and so she's going to assist this evening, actually, she's gonna give the majority of the report because this is really her, her area. So, we're happy to have you on board and excited about the work that you're doing so far, so. We'll begin, and we have a very short presentation. So this is our report on safety. It's our annual report. It's referring to our goal number four, where we state that all schools will create and maintain safe learning environments that promote excellent academic achievement. The first data slide that we have, these are the priority benchmarks that we're taking a look at this evening. This is third and fifth grade students, and this slide shows over a four-year period from 2014, the students without suspensions or expulsions in grades three and five. Just to refresh the memory of the board, the district goal by 2018 was 97 percent and, for third grade, and 96 percent for fifth grade. And as you can see, our scores, our percentages are fairly flat. They haven't grown much. The fifth grade is hovering in the 93 to 94 percentile, and our third grade is 95 percentile.
These are, this is our subgroups for third grade, and for third grade, you can see most are trending positive, and we don't have any statistical significant gain on any of these. However, Native American students did increase 5.7 percent. For fifth grade students, we see more mixtures of positive and negative. Our Pacific Islander students took the largest, had the largest decline at 3.3 percent. However, we saw positive growth for our Black, multiracial, and Hispanic students. Overall, there's slight variability from year to year. However, the number of students without suspensions or expulsions remains above 93 percent. For third grade, five of 12 subgroups, and for fifth grade, two of 12 subgroups have met the 2018 district goal. Overall, Black, multi-special education, and male subgroups have slightly more exclusionary discipline than other subgroups. However, our Black students made a slight improvement from 2016 to 2017 in both the third and fifth grade. Our next steps. The TWCI team has done extraordinary work at the site level. Our charge this year is to bring it deeper for the classroom teachers. We are providing resources, strategies, and virtual professional learning community for classroom teachers. We're continuing the good work that we've done in previous years, and we also have an ongoing professional development on classroom management for our K-12 teachers. We will continue to strengthen the use of data by the Whole Child Initiative, the TWCI teams, including this discipline data right here, to help with proactive interventions. We'll use the Wallace Grant, also known as T-SELLY, Tacoma Social and Emotional Learning Initiative, to develop explicit instruction for social and emotional learning. We are building capacity within each building by providing training to counselors in social skills group intervention. This is a Tier Two intervention called SS GRIN, and we have our first full-day training tomorrow morning. We finally are developing plans. We're working to increase our support at the secondary level and rolling out more cohorts for the 2018-19 school year. What questions can I answer this evening?
Director Beal?
It's maybe just that I don't know what the acronyms are, what it is, but what's a two, what's a two-tier when you're building capacity for training at two-tier? What does that mean?
Oh, great question. A Tier Two is a second-level intervention. So we look at our Tier One interventions as serving at hopefully 85 percent to 90 percent of our students. So although it is a universal application, every student gets these supports and interventions, where we know that some are going to need extra support. They'll still receive the Tier One, but a small group will need Tier Two interventions. And then a small percentage of those students will need individual intervention, and that's a Tier Three level.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice President Cobb?
So, I think I, and like, some, all of my colleagues, continue to be really bothered by the subgroup outcomes for our Black students and our students with disabilities. So I just really wanna, I know that you're, this is a focus, but just to hearing, like, the specific steps related to these two subgroups in particular, and I just, I'm always thinking about how families are engaged in our efforts to figure out ways of effectively supporting our students. So I just wanna know more about the strategies to engage families, and in particular, we had comment tonight from, uh, where's my note? From?
Special needs.
From, yes, from the Special Needs PTA. So how are we engaging the parents of our African-American students and the parents of our students who are getting specially-designed instructions, students with disabilities, in our efforts to bring these gaps, close these gaps? Because it's just, it's still, like, really bothersome.
Yeah, I agree. When, this has been a great learning curve for me, really diving into this data, and one thing that stood out to me is that for our Black students and our special education students, the gap is relatively small in third and fifth grade, but it widens considerably in middle, middle school, and it shrinks again in high school. We want a zero gap, no gap at all. However, that middle school really stands out to me, and what is happening at that middle school level is something that this, building this presentation here has really jumped to the forefront for us, and how can we intervene at that middle school level and provide extra support for those students? So, we have a district secondary TWCI team that's comprised of district leadership and principals, and we're bringing in the youth voice to help support this, this work and moving forward. We understand that what has worked at the elementary level needs to be refined and elevated for secondary. So that means that we are really bringing forward restorative justice in a powerful way. You mentioned the voice of families, and how are we bringing families in to connect? And that's something that I've been working with Josh Darling, who's here this evening, and Amanda Scott-Thomas, and we're working together to build out, that's what's called shift two. Shift one is while the students are, I'm sorry, that's shift three. Shift one is when the students are with us in school. Shift two are when the students are in community-based organizations, so after-school programs. Shift three is when they're with their families, and shift four is when they're in their community. And in that regard, I'm working with Safe Streets to help build out that sector as well. So it's a total, it's a large problem to solve. We, we are invested deeply in our hearts and our minds, and we are dedicated to closing that gap completely.
Good.
And as a follow-up to that, I heard you say, um, supporting our students, but also in this, I just, and I know a big part of the Whole Child Initiative is educating our educators too, and helping to build their capacity. So I think just the focus on that part of it too, and figuring out, are there, is there some miscommunication even about what is something to be disciplined around? Like, how do we just get to the heart of still what I think is some room we have to grow with regard to just understanding one another?
Thank you for that. We agree completely. We just concluded a, we took a look at this discipline, at the data that is compiled, to make sure that we're using it to drive down deeply enough and support, have, have our teachers have support to the Power BI to really reflect on the trends that are happening at the classroom level, at the site level, at the subgroup level. So we pulled together principals and staff leaders, or district leadership, and we had a very heated discussion about how we can improve the data that's out there. We look at it in two parts, as architecture and execution. So that was building out the architecture and making sure that we have a clear referral process. Do we have discipline, you know, when there's an action taken on a discipline, is it only, the only option is something that is negative or exclusionary? What about if there's some positive options as well? That we have, so we build out a long list of options, and that is a, a, a part of our training of sites and of teachers, and to change the hearts, that it is about repairing harm that's been done, not finding a rule broken and punishing. It's a real shift.
Thank you.
Other comments?
So, having had five children and many foster children, I never believed in formal discipline. So, do we talk about informal discipline, just like saying to the child, "You shouldn't, you know, do you think that was a smart thing to do?" Not documenting it, but just kind of bring, bring it to their attention, and is that a discussion going on?
So we would like to teach behavior the same way that we teach math, that it's not that we expect students to know math, we don't expect them to all know the same behavior in a certain situation. So we wanna look at it as a teaching issue, that we want to help them learn behaviors and not just punish.
That's right. Thank you.
Director Beal?
Can I follow up a little bit on that? Teaching, teaching behavior to the kids, are we going to help the parents understand what that, what that is? Because I have a lot of young parents, and, and even when I was an old parent, we had our kids, and teaching behavior, I think, is probably one of the most difficult things we do with our kids. And I would hope that we would have a parent, perhaps a parent component with, working with parents in a positive way and saying, "Hey, we've all had that impulse to just, you know, get in the, in bed and pull the covers over your head when the kids are going nuts and tearing the house up, and, you know, and when you're a grandma, you get to send them home at the end of the day." But, but seriously, about whether we could, you know, include that, looking at more parent involvement, more parent education on, we know that when a, when a child is focused in, in the classroom, that they do better, and that means for, for behavior. And also, one of the things that, you know, I observed in my limited experience in 10 years working in two Eastside schools here in the district, that behavior sometimes is an outcry for attention and help. And are, and are we, you know, are we looking really hard at, at that? I mean, if I can't get positive, pat on the head, I'm not a A student, I'm not, so, you know, I'm just gonna be class clown, or I'm gonna do worse. Or is that something that we're looking at as to why the kids are? I think I know the answer, but I'd like to hear it from you. You're the new kid on the block, so you get to get through this, but I'm serious about, number one, the parent component, and number two, looking more in-depth at why is that child acting up? What is that? And that kind of fits, I think, with Superintendent Santorino's philosophy about looking at the barriers to children's success. So I guess, I don't expect a total answer, but I just wanna know if that's, or some of the component parts that we're looking at, especially with a lot of our children with disabilities, and our children of color, who have family situations, or poverty, or whatever, often impact how they perform at school?
Yeah, so we have what's called FAST, and this is a way for teachers to, that we're building and helping to train. We're not there yet at capacity, but it takes a look at three different behaviors when a student is acting out. One is attention-seeking, another's avoidance, and another, the third, is power struggle. And routing supports depending on that behavior, and training teachers on how they can help support the child, depending on what they're seeking, what they're really trying to get from that interaction. And of course, the bulk of our work is the Tier One intervention, where it's proactive, where we're really setting them up for success in a climate and culture that's safe and civil and welcoming, where they feel connected and cared for. And the families, as you asked, we, we certainly wouldn't wanna tell families what to do, but we would welcome them.
I'm not suggesting that, but.
No, of course not.
But help.
Yes. But we would like to have that collaboration with families, and that is a piece that we're not at capacity yet to implement, but we're working collectively and consistently to build that third shift out, the families.
Yes, because I saw your shift is, is number three, and that's why I asked that question.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Any comments from our student board members? Okay, I just wanna reiterate what Director Cobb said in terms of the special ed numbers and the numbers for our Black students, to see that we do so much work to try and see the needle move, and consistently, these needles are moving in the wrong direction. So, I just wanna be on the record with that, because it makes me crazy, particularly when we're talking, looking at special ed students that have IEPs, this stuff should be addressed. Sending them home for regular behavior and excluding them is tragic, in my opinion. I know that our, and it's tragic in the case of African-American students as well, don't get me wrong.
Me neither.
I know that we've done a lot of work in both directions, and we've got staff working really hard on it. I really look forward to finding solutions that move that needle in the other direction, because each and every one of those students is as much worth it as anybody in any of those other subgroups, and I know is our shared humble opinion.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Next is item 15.2, which is the semi-annual report on the Urban Collaborative on, on that note.
Okay. Well, thank you. If you don't mind, I think, given the time, I think some of the content, I will move a little quicker with this evening and be able to follow up with any Friday report pieces or anything that would be helpful to the board. I would like to take a moment to make sure and introduce John Bell and Stephen Mondragon back here, two team members, our directors, that really, they're the ones behind doing all this work with, with the teams and working with the buildings and leading the building efforts. So I really wanna make sure, and thank these two for the work that they're doing every day, and I appreciate you both. The format tonight is there is no year to all of you. I was recognizing that this coming April makes our five-year mark. Hard to believe where time goes. Tonight, I'm really gonna touch on three pieces. I'm gonna just call them the three Ps, okay? Professional development, PTA, and paperless. Those will be our three quick points to touch on tonight. Got the timelines at a glance in here like we always do for you. This, on the slide for our viewing audience, is just a snippet, just a snippet. The full document will be posted online, I'm gonna say by end of day on Monday to make sure that I'm gonna get that on there, okay? So this is just a snippet to give you the picture of it, and as we track each of the 18 recommendations outlined in the report and the years that we're working on them. The professional development, referencing the intervention framework, which has been shared the last couple of board meetings, and I- and the years that we're working on them. The professional development, referencing the intervention framework that has been shared the last couple of board meetings. And I put down here at the bottom in the orange banner line there, the link to the full document on our hub. So on the staff site, and I followed up with the webmaster to get that onto our public site as well. That was not, a piece I did not realize wasn't on our public. So that is one that I'm happy to do any follow-up with you as well, giving you an opportunity to view that. And as well, if you'd like, I do have hard copy notebooks if you're interested in that. We trained over half of our elementary staff in the K-five reading intervention framework this summer. And the team is starting now on the six-twelve ELA as well. The Whole Educator Academy, another one of our PD pieces, that's one you've heard quite a bit about this fall. That celebration there for us is taking from the transition from an annual kickoff that was just special education staff. Then we moved to an inclusive practices conference that was a fifty-fifty of general education and special education staff. And then this last August to have the Whole Educator Academy, where everybody coming together in one location for professional development. Our professional learning networks, we continue with those each month. And those are primarily after-school meetings. And we have those arranged around behavior, autism, and resource and such to provide the professional development for our staff. Our PTA, so you had the pleasure this evening of listening to Sue speak. I asked her to come, she wanted to be with us tonight and I figured that was our best way to get. But you know what? Dan Vopel had even a better way. And so if you'll indulge me, Tom is gonna pull up a quick three-minute video. And I thank Sue so much for taking the time to come in. I want to let you know, it was just yesterday, I think, was that right, Sue? Just yesterday, so thank you to Sue and thank you to Dan Vopel's team and Tom for helping get it up here for us this evening.
Two children and a husband. My two kids, I have a daughter who's thirteen and my son Bodhi is eleven. And he is in fifth grade. And he has autism and ADHD and a couple of other diagnoses. We, we've had a unique experience with our son where he has, he has, in his short academic career, experienced multiple settings. He's on his third elementary school right now. So our group formed basically on the playground at Skyline Elementary last year, was that the seeds were sown for us to begin. We felt like there was the need for a collective voice for the four thousand-plus students in Tacoma who access special education. There's, I know it's a big district and it's hard to, to reach everybody, but the one thing, you know, you can count on is that if parents aren't communicated with and given the information that they need, then they're gonna be upset. So one of the things that we wanted to make clear from the start is that we're not a support group. We are a true PTA. So we want to be able to advocate for parents and teachers as well. We formed because there was a gap between what the district knows and what the parents know. And I think, you know, I think that the director has, well, she's actually the superintendent of Student Services, but I think that she has recognized that we can fill that void and she's working with us and we're really appreciative of that. I have my own opinions on inclusion. I have, I have, you know, do I love the fact that other kids can see my kid for who he is and appreciate his differences? Absolutely. My, my big thing is what does this mean long-term? There are also things that go along with the inclusive model for my kid personally that are stressful to me because my child has behaviors. You know, when my child gets riled up in the wrong way, he can lash out and hurt people. So then it brings on another layer of, oh my God, what did he do today? You know, and worrying about how, how is this inclusion, inclusion model portrayed to parents of neurotypical kids whose classroom my kid is in? You know, for a long time, I've, I've been trying to find a way to help other parents who've been on a similar journey that I've been on. And, but it always feels good to help people, you know? And I think with the PTA, I've actually, I've finally found the right way, not just for myself, but for other parents to kind of pay it forward and help other parents who are just starting out. And parents are each other's best support. So that's been, it's been really rewarding to hear the, the positive things people have to say about the PTA. You know, are we going to get everything right? No, we're not going to, but we're going to try because our, our model is parents and trying to not have parents have to go through the same things that we went through and helping them through the process.
Thank you, Sue. I want to make sure and publicly thank the, the entire board. Sue represents as the president, but she's got a board that's working with her, with her leadership. They really have been pretty magnificent. We, we've tried in several different ways to reach out and we just weren't being as successful as what Sue and the, the board have been able to be. So we are delighted with the partnership that we have. I want to throw out a couple of numbers. So it was official, charter became in just last December. And we have just under a hundred members with seventeen staff members. And on their Facebook page, it's just another snapshot. I checked again today, up to two-hundred-and-ninety-five friends on the Facebook page. So we have been working together to go through and help support and make for the meaningful meetings for parents and for district staff then coming together. As an example, I just put a little picture on there. Back on October tenth, Stephen Mondragon and John Bell sat down with Sue and with some other parents to plan for the transitions. Plan for, as we're already looking to next year and thinking, what, what were the questions that parents had? What do they need to know? How can we help to smooth away, smooth away from the transition? So we're really grateful for this partnership and wanted to make sure and celebrate that with you. So then the last P that I'm going to touch on this evening then is paperless. Really, maybe not very exciting, very small, very small. But it's, a lot of the work that we've been doing around the Urban Collaborative takes a lot of time. You know, professional development takes a lot of time and it's gonna be every year. Paperless is one of the new things that we, we just kicked this off in September. You'll see there the goals of going paperless and it's really about being efficient. We have over had, pardon me, over nine hundred documents each month being sent from the buildings into CAB for us to process. That meant staff were shuffling papers, doing all the clerical work to get it turned in here. So we went to paperless, really working to, you know, save the time. OSPI was very supportive of this and we have other districts in our state that have implemented, both Seattle and Evergreen Schools were two of the districts that we, that we looked at to learn from their process. We surveyed our staff prior to the implementation, really seeking, trying to get a feel for it, is what do we think? Eighty-five percent of our staff that participated in the survey said that they had easy access to the multi-function printer that was gonna help us get the paperless done. And seventy-eight percent of the staff reported that they were not intimidated by the process. So we thought that was good information to forge ahead with. So how are we doing now? We've done another survey so far this fall to say, okay, so how are we doing? And on a scale of five stars, four-point-three stars are rated by our staff. We will survey them again as more and more have been in the system now with, with IEPs. The data that we got from the survey as well, we're developing a Q and A then to take that to make that be functional for our staff. So next couple of slides, what does it mean for our staff? What does it mean for parents? What does it mean for students? And what does it mean for our district? So I will just quickly go through those. This slide here is really to highlight the various different ways that we're trying to support our staff and really hearing from them, what do they need to get, to get this done? And really to be a help for them. Again, the number one piece about being paperless was to be efficient. IEPs were already done electronically, but the signature, it was still hustling the paperwork to get it turned in here. So now they scan the signature page to count as our official record then. We found that this gives back over seven hours of valuable time for, for our teachers and our therapists to plan their lesson plans and to monitor progress for their students. So we're pretty excited about that since that is far more important to us than paperwork. What does it mean for our parents? I think we hope that our parents will see that they can receive their IEPs via email. They have a greater sense of accessibility to the documents and that their teacher has more time for planning. For the students, their teacher also has more time to talk with others, to connect with parents, to connect with other teachers, to communicate and plan and to monitor the progress. What does this mean, whoops, what does this mean for our district? It should save us time. It should save us some paper. It's really about implementing a lean practice to be more efficient. We're working to remove the waste, the waste of waiting for paper to come in, the waste of transporting it out from our buildings into CAB, the waste of the motion, everyone sorting the mail, moving all through it, and the extra processing. So last piece, I always follow up with you then, what are our next steps? You'll see several of these items around professional development. We're also, we have special education teachers serving on the K-twelve alignment of standards. We work closely with teaching and learning team. And we're monitoring the implementation of the intervention framework for the K-five reading. We sent out a survey this week to our principals and we'll be surveying our teachers mid-year. Just giving them a little more time to be, to, to implement. We'll continue with the communication with our data to our buildings. And then next week, we have our exciting co-hosting with Seattle, of the Urban Collaborative Conference up in Seattle. And then lastly, I'll be back in April for our five-year report. That concludes report this evening.
Thank you. Questions and comments from the board?
I have some. I am so excited that we have a special needs PTA. As a parent of now graduate of a student that was special needs, the, there's a huge need out there for parents to have somebody to connect to, to find information with. So kudos to you and I wish you all the best. And if there's any way I can help personally, ever, please let me know because it's so, so vital. I want to make sure that we as a district are, remain cognizant of our responsibility to reach out to families beyond the PTA because it's not their responsibility to do that part of our job. Although I hope that you have membership from all over the community and everybody wants to be there, don't get me wrong. But I don't want that burden to be reliant on, on you entirely. There's certainly plenty of parents that don't have the same access or ability to attend meetings. And I just want to make sure that that's really evident and that we take that seriously and have other measures in place that we are doing to increase parent involvement, particularly around special needs issues. You mentioned a survey. Was the survey about your paperless process? I thought it was also unique that there was five slides on your paperless process. So I appreciate your enthusiasm for the efficiency. I like paperless too. But tell me what the survey was exactly on and how many people were in it and?
Yes, the survey, the initial survey was to check in, to, to check the tone of our staff, what do they think so that would help us plan. We did that in June before school was out so that we could be set up over the summer. And then the survey, then this fall with our staff. Last time I had checked, it was, we had fifty-two responses. It was, which is why we want to do it again in November, December because it was primarily our school psychologists at that point. As, as a general rule, we say that IEPs that are due in September should be done the school year before so that we have such a mobile population of our students that we can focus in on all of our new students moving in and reduce that paperwork load in September. So therefore, we didn't have as many IEPs in September. So it was primarily, primarily our psychologists that were responding. We asked if they had, basically, questions were around if they had the right resources, what was working, what wasn't working, and what questions they had so that we could better support them.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
I had another question really quick, but I think it escaped me. Vice President Cobb has something, so I'll come back.
This totally blows your three Ps, but I'm channeling Director Hines right now and following up on your parent involvement discussion. I think this is great too, the special needs PTA is awesome and I'm totally excited. But in the spirit of what you are actually engaging in, I think you have to scratch your parent involvement and make that family engagement because it really is getting to the partnership that should exist between the, the district and our families. And I think Director Hines would say it, so I'm channeling him and saying, we've gotta keep focusing on family engagement to focus in on the fact that it should be partnership.
So is it PFP or FPP?
I don't know, but it just blows the three Ps. So I wasn't gonna say it, but then.
Oh, I do have another question, actually. Are you doing some sort of external survey regarding parents and graduates of the special needs program?
We are. We are required each year to do that. OSPI requires it at a, at a certain level and it is done for what's called our levers. So where we make our phone calls out to our students that have graduated and to check in on their participation in post-education, employment. And one other piece is escaping me at the moment.
Okay, I received some confusing messages about that, so I'll follow up with that, about that personally. So I appreciate that.
I'm sorry to hear that, yes.
Director, sorry, Wenskill.
So this is for later. I would really like to have a study session at some time on inclusion. What our philosophy is, I know that some parents are not happy with some of the, you know, they like the sort of the self-contained for some of the children. So just kind of a philosophy, how many self-contained classrooms we have, how we interact with some of the students who may not be successful in a big classroom. So just a later time, perhaps.
I'd be happy to work with Superintendent Santorno to plan or respond in any way that would be helpful to the board. And I'm thrilled, Director Wenskill, that you'll be able to join us next week, the Urban Collaborative Conference. And as an, as an opportunity there to learn more about inclusion. I really want to make sure and emphasize, full inclusion's not for every student.
Yeah.
So it's, it always must be student by student.
I do know that, so I'd like to know our philosophy and how many, the numbers and what we do, so.
I'd just like to make one, one comment. I'm, I'm just struck, you know, now we're talking about specifics and, and fine-tuning and working and I remember where we were when we started this process. We were really talking about how bad the structure was and how we weren't serving kids. And now we're down to how are we serving them better and increasing our, our benchmarks and so on, numbers. When we did the Urban Collaborative and Superintendent Santorno came to us and said, we need to do this because we got a bad model. And we did. And I think we sometimes forget how far we've come. And I, I've been cognizant of that a couple of times this last month or so about where, I guess, going to the luncheon, the graduate Tacoma lunch, when we look at our numbers, we get sometimes, we just got getting down in the weeds that we forget to look at the big picture about just how far we've come. And I think we've made great strides in the special ed program. I've heard that from a number of parents. And we always, I have more work to do. But I just want to compliment Jennifer on, as we see those bars get filled in and what we said we were gonna do and where we were gonna be, that we have an awfully good foundation now for our program for us to continue to fine-tune and serve our kids. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
All right, next we are on to item number sixteen, which are board comments and reports. Let's start with our students. Will, you have a report?
Uh, yeah, on the S-OSL study senate meeting just last week, I just wanted to bring up some points. One thing we discussed was the AWSL program. And I know there were some questions about schools either didn't know about it or some schools claimed that they weren't allowed to go. So I would, I was just wanting like better information to be spread to us students to know more about that program.
Can you tell me what AWSL stands for?
Yeah, would you do that?
Actually, Mount Tacoma actually attended that. I don't actually know what it stands for because I didn't go. But I do know the reason why other schools weren't able to go. So I guess there was a law passed that if the students weren't staying with people who weren't fingerprinted, they weren't allowed to, the school wasn't allowed to go. So our ASB advisor at Mount Tacoma actually did paperwork before that law was passed and she got approved. And then when other schools tried to do it, they denied them. So it was just like a really long process for the advisor. But now the person that's in charge of OSL is taking care of having everyone who, like, houses the students to be fingerprinted. But that was the only issue. That's why other schools weren't able to go.
So I'm happy to speak to that. I think it's the Association of Washington Student Leaders.
Thank you.
And it's for student bodies. And it's my understanding, I worked with James Neal, is our, who you met earlier tonight, our athletic director. And he reviews field trip requests. And then the field trip requests go to Tony Pace, our assistant superintendent of K-twelve. And then they go to the legal department. And the purpose of the legal department is to ask questions about have we planned to make sure that our students will be safe. The only field trip package that we reviewed for the student conference was from Mount Tacoma. So that means that there were other schools that I'm not sure why they chose not to attend. So back to Will's question earlier, I think we should look more into that. I can tell you that the fingerprint issue is one that there has been a recent change in the law, that we're in the process of implementing. The law took effect. in the law, that we're in the process of implementing, the law took effect October sixteenth. But that wasn't what was holding up the issue with your trip. The concern that we had for your trip was that there were home stays. So, you got to stay in someone's home.
Right.
Right. And so, we always want to make sure that you're going to be staying someplace safe. It's always our, we assume that ninety-nine percent of people out there who are going to open their homes to students are good and kind people, but as the lawyer, it's my job to think about the worst-case scenario. And so, what we did is we put a special protocol in place to make sure that the homes that you were staying in were ones with Yakima District employees, and that your parents signed a specific consent form that said, I understand that my student is going to stay in, in this home. So, we did our best to expedite that and get that through and get you guys there, and I'm really glad you got to go, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that those, that your school, Mount Tacoma, was the only one we reviewed.
Right, and I don't think other schools knew about it, except for Foss, I think, that they tried to go, but honestly, I don't know why they couldn't go, but other schools didn't know until the All City Senate meeting. But I do think other schools should try and, like, go next year, because it's a good opportunity.
Good, I'm glad you got to go.
Yeah, that was my only comment.
Thank you very much. And do you have a report in addition to that?
I didn't personally get to go, actually, but I did get to, like, talk to people that went, and I think it's like a great opportunity. You learn a lot of leadership skills and see what other schools do that you can bring back to your school, and, like in the All City Senate meetings, report to other schools and just have, like, brainstorming ideas for the whole district.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Director Bial?
Just one comment, last week ago, Tuesday, I attended Franklin's Elementary STEAM Dinner called Luminescence, and talk about parent engagement and involvement, it was awesome, they had a dinner. It was sponsored by Graduate Tacoma, the foundation, and it was all about biotech and about things that glow, and they had hands-on things, and there was probably well over two-hundred people that attended, parents, kids. I want to give a shout-out to Franklin, Keisha did a wonderful job, and it was, you know, it was an example of what we should be doing at all of our schools, and we had biotech company, a new startup, called Rain, that was there that did all of the exhibits for the kids to actually build, like glow sticks, to see what bio material actually glows in the dark, and what you can do, and how it's used, and so it encompassed the STEAM concept, and it also was a great family building and getting acquainted, and I sat next to a mom with two kids, and I asked her, she liked Franklin, and she said, well, we just moved here, and we weren't sure about this school, but this is the, I think, the best school, and my one son's in the fifth grade, and that we've ever been to, people care, principal, you know, and so on, and so on. So, I just want to say Franklin, you did well.
Thank you. I don't have any report tonight. Thank you, Director Winskill. Vice President Cobb?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'll be really brief. We had a Eastside Community Center building update. They're putting walls up, they're, they're getting retaining walls going, they're looking at potentially having roofing materials on by, by Christmas, so they can start building out. So, still looking at fall for opening. They've done some serious work on the naming of the building and surveys in that regard, and that there is a recommendation that will go to the Metro Parks Building Board on eleven-thirteen, and after doing bids out for PR folks and all that kind of stuff, and lots of community input, and then surveys back out with suggested names, the recommended name is the Eastside Community Center.
I'm stopping, really.
So, anyway, I just wanted to give you up that date on that. The other piece of that that was really exciting is that our partnership that we've done with them, and making sure that there's a way to provide access cards for parents to opt in to get a better value or scholarships to the community centers and lots of Metro Parks activities throughout the city. I think that's probably another way that we're forging the way, figuring out ways that we can do joint communication, so that people actually know how to opt in, where to get the information, that it matters, that it counts for the whole family, is going to be relevant. So, I put that out there early, because I'm sure there'll be lots of dialogue in the next year that we have before this opens, and yeah, warmed my heart, it's why we do the work that we do. That is the end of my report. Next on the agenda, I would like to skip to nineteen, but I cannot. We have an executive session, the board will recess into executive session for approximately thirty minutes to review negotiations on the performance of publicly-labeled contracts when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased cost in accordance with RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one-ten. Thank you. Well, we have to come out after words, so this is the second agenda. Thank you very much, you're very good.